Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's Tuesday, June the 2nd, 2015. It's here at 6:04. We're here in City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. Our regular council meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Lane Meeks to lead us in our invocation, followed with the pledge allegiance to the flag and the Texas flag. All rise, please.
Father, we come before you today. And your word tells us that plans fail for lack of counsel, but with many advisors, they succeed. Father, we lift up this group of advisors, this group of leaders, and we just invite your Holy Spirit to convene with us tonight here in this room. And I pray that as they discuss and deliberate the plans of the city, I pray that we would do that and honor you and everything that is said and done tonight. It's in Christ that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, in the middle of liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, one God, one individual.
At this time, we'll have a presentation by the Regional Aging Advisory Committee report from Ms. Donnie Green.
I appreciate the opportunity to be with you, and my purpose in joining you tonight is share some information about the services that are funded through the North Central Texas Council of Governments Area Agency on Aging. Our agency supports services for older adults and family caregivers. The services that we fund are available to eligible persons at no charge. And we provide services in two different ways. One through contracts, and then we have other services that we offer as direct services from our offices in Arlington. Our contracted services include nutrition services, home-delivered meals, congregate meals. Those services, as all of the services that we support, are available at no charge, although folks certainly can make donations, and any donations that we receive are used to expand those services. Here in Hood County, we are proud to support the Hood County Committee on Aging, provide funding for its home-delivered meal, congregate meal, and transportation program for people age 60 and over. In terms of direct services, the major services that we support are information and referral. We also have a care coordination program that helps older persons who are coming out of a nursing home, or rehab facility, or hospital. We have social workers who will conduct home visits and arrange services such as minor home repair. We're proud to have received a grant recently from the Texas Department of Aging and Disability Services that allows us to build wheelchair ramps. We do installation of handrails and grab bars and widen bathroom doorways so that our consumers can easily get in and out of their homes. We also provide benefits counseling services, and if you or anybody you know has ever tried to understand their Medicare benefits, or sign up for a Medicare prescription drug program, you know what fund that is. We have staff and volunteers who can help people connect with the various benefits to which they're entitled. We recently received a grant that will allow us to work with Medicare beneficiaries with low incomes. There are a number of federal and state programs that are available to Medicare beneficiaries with limited income and resources, and those programs tend to be underutilized. Many people who qualify don't know the programs exist, have difficulty filling out the paperwork, and so through our benefits counseling program, we can help people sign up for benefits that will pay for their Medicare deductibles and premiums and copayments. We have a number of programs that assist family caregivers of older adults. We have the ability to provide respite care to caregivers so that they can take a break. We fund counseling for caregivers in-home services, homemaker, respite, that will allow the family caregiver to better support the older person with the goal of allowing them to remain safely in the community. Our agency is also very involved in helping people in nursing homes advocate for their rights and return to the community. We have a very robust nursing home relocation program that works with nursing home residents who've been approved for Medicaid benefits. We help people find housing, get benefits in place, access transition grants that will pay for furniture and deposits and pots and pans. Historically, we've been a provider of social services, but we are getting much more involved in health promotion and prevention activities. And specifically, we are doing a number of workshops in the area to help people better deal with chronic disease, heart disease, arthritis, depression, as well as diabetes self-management classes. We also host fall prevention classes and support groups for family members who are caring for persons with Alzheimer's. As I mentioned, all of our services are available at no cost. We are funded by the federal and state government, so taxpayers have made our services possible. Again, my intent in being with you tonight is to let you know about the services that are available to your constituents. We do serve a 14-county area consisting of those counties that surround but don't include Dallas and Tarrant. Historically, we have been limited to working with people age 60 and over, but we did receive a special grant a number of years ago that allows us to work with people of all ages with disabilities, as well as their caregivers. And we get calls from parents of children with autism, caregivers of adults with Down Syndrome, and we help people navigate what can be a very complex and confusing network of health and social services. We have options counselors who can help people understand whether they qualify for Medicaid services, Medicaid waiver programs that can provide help in the community. Although we're based in Arlington, we do have a satellite office here in Granbury. We are co-located at Pecan Valley Centers on Pirate Drive, and we do have staff who are available three days a week, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, who can meet with individuals with disabilities, their caregivers, and kind of map out a plan that will allow them to remain in the community as long as possible. So with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Green? Thank you very much, and I appreciate what you guys do for the community.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, we'll go into our citizens' participation. The City Council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizens' participation. At the City Council meeting, one per month, subject to the following rules. A person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. And only one person may approach the microphone at any time, and the only person at the microphone upon recognition by the presiding officer will be allowed to speak. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual City Council members or the staff. And speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make the information available to the City Council and the City Manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for the future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into a discussion. The council shall allow a maximum of 30 minutes for the citizen's participation during the designated council meeting. And tonight, we have several speakers. We're going to start with Mr. Tom Baker.
I'd like to speak about one of the agenda items tonight. It's the appointment of a tourism advisory member from -- it's a Chamber of Commerce appointment. TIB is made up of 10 members, one at large, each other one from a designated specialty, a special interest group, employment sector, that type of thing. And that's well and good. It gives you a broad range, but are all those people really involved with tourism? Do they know anything about the HOT, the Hotel Occupancy Tax, how it's being spent, or how you can spend it and such? Just taking myself as an example, I'd be considered a bed-and-breakfast owner. That's what I do now. But I've owned restaurants in the past. I've been in hotel operations. I'm on the board of merchants' association. I'm not really a merchant, but I'm involved with them. I do a lot of things at the theater. Would I be in the entertainment sector? You know, so there's people out there, I think, that aren't fitting into that one exact category that's not going to be replaced, and this might be your last replacement that you can appoint to the board. Maybe not. We'll see how that progresses. But anyways, I'm not opposed to somebody from the chamber. They're obviously involved in tourism and with the community and such, but maybe we shouldn't just look at somebody with a chamber association for the next appointment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be John Garrison. John out there? Is John out there? Did I pronounce it right? John Garrison? Oh, he's coming, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me duck down there.
My name is John Garrison, and I've been asked to come here to speak to you all about geoengineering.
John, could you go ahead and state your address and telephone number and all that?
Yes, I'm John Garrison. I'm at 532 West Lake Drive, Weatherford, Texas. And I've been asked to come down. I work with a man named Dane Wiggington, who is the authority on geoengineering. And what we're trying to do today is just get the information out to everybody that they need to look at this subject very closely. It has a lot of topics that vary from chemtrails in the sky to adjusting the weather to all these things that are going on in our lives, and we don't really know what the outcome is. We do know that they've been trying to curb global warming, many things like that, but the main thing we're interested in on this is the method they use for seeding clouds for rain. They'll spray something in the clouds. Well, to prevent a lot of pollution that we put up in the air, they're trying to seed it with different types of metals. Well, the metals they're using are aluminum. And Dane Wiggington, who's been working on this for 12 years, has discovered that the particles of aluminum are going off the charts, and they're starting to affect health of the people today. We're having more and more health problems today than ever on different areas, and they're directly because of these particulates that we are ingesting in our food and our water. So this is getting in -- it is coming down. So I'm here to just basically introduce that geoengineering is a subject that I would like everyone, including the council, to research. This has to do with our children's children. This has to do with our very -- you know, I know everybody's heard the environmental thing all their life. I've never been into that. I wrote the WQA Act for the Water Quality Act for EPA in the '80s, and I thought it was very viable that we have good, clean water to drink and find out how we're polluting it. But now, this is a subject that's been brought to my attention, and I have other things that I'm doing, but I dropped what I'm doing to come and talk to you all about this and just say, "Please, research this for yourself." I know everybody knows about chemtrails, right? Well, we have a pilot here that'll explain what I thought was the truth and what you all probably know the same thing is. So basically, go check geoengineering out. I'm not trying to scare anybody. I just want you to be aware that we have health problems coming down the line, and they're already affecting us in amounts that are unbelievable. So at that, I'll think my three minutes are about up, aren't they? Yeah? So we do have a video from Dane Williams that we'll contend that you can get from the group SkyWatch over here that's going to talk next. So if you would, go to geoengineeringwatch.org for information. You look it up. You decide for yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. I want to remind the speakers, make sure you are addressing the council chambers, the council up here. Our next speaker is Larry Browning.
My name is Larry Browning, and my wife and I live at 309 Benita Drive here in Granbury, Texas. And I'm a retired airline pilot, and I'm here to explain a little bit about the difference between contrails and chemtrails, basically. They can be confusing because what geoengineering is doing, they are using large aircraft to spray the atmosphere with chemicals. And the chemtrails that they leave, or geoengineering trails that they leave, look a lot like commercial aircraft trails they leave behind. The difference being is that with the chemtrails, the trails actually begin at the nozzle at the back of the aircraft, and usually these nozzles are placed behind the engine, oftentimes on the wingtips. And these are the areas where normal aircraft can leave contrails like that. But the difference is that basically contrail, rather than the exhaust gas from the engine creating the contrail, it's actually the fact that the engine is actually adding moisture to the atmosphere, and that moisture then condenses and forms a cloud. However, that doesn't begin until several feet behind the airplane, and usually it dissipates, depending upon the atmosphere, how turbulent the air is, that type of thing can disrupt it rather quickly, sometimes within a matter of feet. Oftentimes, it will continue for several miles, but does tend to dissipate. Chemtrails do not dissipate. They will widen out and eventually disappear to the human eye, but they don't really dissipate. You will also see aircraft, usually commercial aircraft primarily travel east and west for the most part. There are some north and south flights, but most of them are east-west for the most part. Those aircraft that are spraying the atmosphere, you might see them traveling north and south. You might see them in a line that's not straight. In other words, they're curving, they're turning, and that's an indication of an aircraft that's spraying the atmosphere. I have seen these myself. I have seen indications. I can't prove that that's what it was, but my own experience is that that's what it was. But chemtrails, to the average individual, can be construed to be normal airline traffic. Now, I see my time is up, so I'll leave to the next person to talk. Thank you very much.
Next speaker will be Lori Smiskel. Is that correct? Excuse me a minute. Did you get her name and address?
Lori Smiskel, and my address is 2004 West Spanish Trail Drive, Granbury, Texas. And I'm a reflexologist, and I'm an energy practitioner.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And what we can do, the first thing we can do is we can test our rainwater, and we can test our soil, and those charts will show you exactly what's going on as far as the particulates right now. We are very, very high in aluminum, and because I'm involved in health, and I know that Rose is involved in health, you know, we have seen Alzheimer's go off the charts. It shows you the -- just let me read you about Alzheimer's to give you an example because I want to talk about health. Alzheimer's disease is an irreversible degeneration of the brain that causes disruptions in memory, cognition, personality, and eventually leads to death from complete brain failure. This is what's happening. A lot of people are getting major brain fog right now. I know I've had major brain fog. I'm sure if you can think about yourselves, respiratory illnesses are off the charts. Kids right now are having inhalers. I talked to a teacher. She says they have a whole stock full drawer of inhalers. It never existed before. We had one or two in a school. More than 5 million Americans are now have Alzheimer's disease. One of our ladies that came with us, she owns her own healthcare retirement agency, and she says almost all of her patients have Alzheimer's. There's something wrong with that picture, okay? So that's one thing we can do, is we can test the air, the water. And right now, Alzheimer's is on the rise every day. Autism is off the charts as well, and cancer right now, one in three women are getting it, and one in two men are getting it. There's something wrong with those numbers, and it's because of what they've been spraying on us since the 1940s, okay? It has escalated. If you've looked up into your skies, you see a lot of cloudy skies lately. That is why. So that's the first thing we can do. The second thing we can do that I would like to ask for, if you look at your second packet that I gave you, are the signs. We've got over 12 different signs now that they have now started putting across the nation of stopping geoengineering. It is a government and a military issue, so we must get to the people. We must affect critical mass, and the signs will definitely be a way to do that. We're now working with the top lawyers in the nation right now to actually stop this issue, and the main thing that we have said over and over is we've got to get to the people because people are just not waking up because they're dumping the spraying on us, which is numbing our brains. This is very serious, guys. Very serious issue. And the third thing is to have a meeting so that we can talk about these issues. We have an amazing tape that we can give you, a CD. If you go on geoengineeringwatch.org, you will get amazing information there. It's all scientific-led, and those are the main things that we can do as far as bringing this attention to the people. So I thank you very much for hearing us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Facer.
I live at 1608 Chesapeake Bay Court, Granbury, Texas, 76048. Thank you. I've never been to a council meeting before, and mine isn't a presentation. It's more like two little questions, so I don't know if you entertain answering them. If you don't, that's fine. I live in Catalina Bay. Not to -- just to give you a point of reference about what I see every day, I'm concerned about the grasses that are allowed to grow four feet tall in all the vacant lots, and they spread weeds, and even tonight on the news, it was talking about mosquitoes breed in those deep grasses. I'm not sure of the city regulation. I've been told they're supposed to clear 150 feet, but they don't even seem to be doing that, and the backs of the lots are just -- I mean, they're as tall as me. I would think this has become less of a country area and more of a city area that we could perhaps address some of those issues. You go along Old Acton Road over to 4, where that gentleman has all the army vehicles, and the grass is over -- and so I'm not just talking about Water's Edge, but the grasses over there are pretty bad, too. And I'm not saying go out loop 5, 6, 7 and make everybody mow. I mean, that's farm area. But in the city streets, whoever -- I mean, it's right next to the station, movie theater, and people walk a lot on those sidewalks, and the grasses are growing all up in the tracks there. The other issue, and I'll make this quick, is the pavements. I did try to turn in about two years ago a question to city maintenance over where the motorcycle shop is. That pavement has been patched, repatched, unpatched, done again. It's really, really bad. And the area in front of, well, where Water's Edge, where Taco Bell is, it needs striping. I mean, I know my husband got in an accident there because of unclear striping. So I'm just wondering if there's some way that you, as our council people, can be involved with. I've heard that there's a transportation district that's supposed to take care of the city streets, but we might be kind of far out from Fort Worth. I don't know if that's the truth or not, so I was just hoping that the City Council could maybe engage whoever is working on city streets for restriping and parts of it repaving, not just 377, but some of the subsidiary streets that need repaving and/or restriping. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our citizens' participation. Our next item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda we have tonight is to consider approving the council meeting minutes of May 16, 2015, special meeting, and also the May 19, 2015, regular meeting. Council, you had an opportunity to look over those minutes. Are there any questions or changes or amendments to these minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So I move. I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Counselors, any more discussion? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote? Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda, the first item being a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-23 regarding a quest of Brad Snyder with Penns to approve Lot 2-B Block 1 of the Granbury Oaks addition from interim holding to heavy commercial. The property is addressed as 2210 East Highway 377. Scott, could you give us some more information on that, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. We have as a request to rezone the subject property, which is, if you're familiar with the site, it's Penns, the bowling alley, Granbury Bowling Alley, located just northeast of the pizza shop, Misa Pizza, and behind Monty's Burrito Shop. You can see the green area denotes of the subject property that it's located in interim holding. Interim holding is basically a placeholder for future land uses that are brought into the city. It's been in interim holding for quite some time. As we've talked... As we've talked about interim holding in the past, interim holding tends to hang up any kind of wanted future title transfers and any potential expansions or improvements to the site. So it's very logical that the property owner desires to move this from interim holding to a conforming status with respect to our land use matrix. The notices were sent out to adjoining property owners in accordance with state statute. We did receive one protest from an adjoining, which you can see on your screen constitutes roughly 12% of the adjoining property within the 200-foot notification halo. Due to the fact that the 12% is less than 20%, it does not constitute a three-quarter majority vote. So it's a simple majority vote by council. The proposed district offered by the applicant of heavy commercial is compatible with adjacent surrounding uses. You can see the adjoining uses, I'll get back to the zoning map. In red is similarly zoned heavy commercial. So the zoning district around the subject site and the uses catalogued around the subject site are compatible, kept compatible with the proposed or with the use that they're existing. Our zoning district matrix catalogs this particular use for bowling alley as inside indoor amusement center allowed by Wright. So again, he's migrating to a permissible use in heavy commercial. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the rezoning request as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody in the public want to speak on this issue? Not counsel? Have you had any concerns or questions for Scott? I'll close the public hearing. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance regarding the request of Brad Snyder for the adoption of the ordinance 15-23.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
That ordinance is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Patrick Blue to replat lots 95 to 98 of the Brazos Harbor Mobile Home Parks as lots 95R, 96R, 97R, and 98R of the Brazos Harbor Mobile Home Park to allow the shifting of property lines to accommodate the existing improvements on site. This property is located in the 500 block of the Brazos Harbor Port. Scott, could you bring us up to date on this one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the subject site located within Brazos Harbor Mobile Home Park. You can see we've actually set up a planned development which ties, we worked diligently with the homeowners association out there and tied the PD regulations with the deed restrictions. What we have found a few years prior is that our standard mobile home district regulations really didn't comport. So we worked in earnest with them, dovetailed the two together. They established the PD and it seems to work a lot more seamlessly now. The proposal, you can see the four lots that are highlighted in the aqua color, basically proposes to shift the internal three lines of those four lots only. So you can see they're circled, the leader arrows pointing to the old lot lines that are basically phantomed in and the new lot lines that are highlighted. This does not modify or change in any way, shape, or manner the external dimensions along the road right of way, along the railroad right of way, or the east or west most common property lines external to the proposed replat. As with most non-conforming subdivisions, we have a laundry list of variances with this. We have a variance two. Let's get to the variance list. We have a variance to 35E regarding double frontage lots. Those lots were pre-existing prior to the annexation of that development in the city. Again, we're not increasing the number of lots overall. We're just basically modifying the internal lot lines. A variance to 39 and 46, central water mains, 39 and 45, those are all substandard central mains. But again, we're not increasing the overall density, thus no additional impact is added on to our infrastructure. And we have a variance to 364B regarding residential sidewalks. Again, this is a old grandfathered, non-conforming residential development, mobile home development that was platted and vested with those sidewalks internally to the site. As a part of your agenda packet, you have a letter from your city engineer recommending approval of the variances as specified and contemplating that the proposals of the variances are proportionate to the development as presented on the plat. P&amp;Z and city staff, along with your city engineer, recommend approval of the variances and the replat application as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the public want to speak on this item? Close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any discussion or concerns on this item?
I've got one question, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
If you look in that picture you just had there, on the right side, how many feet is that on the property there?
I do not know. I can tell you whatever area, open area requirements that they have and their deed restrictions are rolled into the PD. So we pretty much let them manage their side yard setbacks. And when we permit that, and it's currently in place, they're basically not asking for any kind of built facility as a part of this replat. So there's no encroachments that we're aware of. So it's my understanding, and maybe Lonnie can echo this sentiment, it's my understanding that the homeowners association has vetted this plat application regarding the placement of the lot lines and they're comfortable with it. So we're not aware of any encroachments as a part of processing this plat application.
Right.
Counsel, any more discussion? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the replat application proposed by the applicant along with the said variances.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? Not counsel? Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That replat is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-24 regarding a request of the City of Granbury to amend sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance. Amendments are proposed to section 4.1.8, the uses permitted by district use table, parking lot, truck added requiring an SUP in heavy commercial zoning. Scott, you want to talk about that one a little bit for us, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Over the course of the last couple of months, we've had at least two, possibly three individuals come into the development department inquiring about commercial activities where they were wanting some heavy commercial parking on site. Currently, our zoning ordinance matrix requires that if you want to put any truck, singular or plural, parking on site for overnight storage there, you actually have to have industrial zoning in place. So this would basically apply to a bobtail, a box truck, and a tractor-trailer type truck. So in this particular instance, this gentleman had a light commercial landscaping business type application, but he was hauling landscaping material and pallets of grass back and forth. Behind the property, he was adjoining interim holding. Basically, it was a 300-acre field. So in working with him, we looked at the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, and there's not many areas that are earmarked for a industrial. And two, city staff and our deliberations at P&amp;Z, we really didn't see a need to zone it to industrial when it opens the door for a lot more heavier, intense activities that may be more proximate to more protected land use districts. So adding an SUP in heavy commercial gives us the luxury of looking at it on a case-by-case basis, looking at the adjoining land uses and districts to see if there's any intrusion of parking a truck there. Again, the specific uses discretionary, there's no obligation of the city to embrace the specific use permit. Council and P&amp;Z can look at it case by case. If it's adjoining residential or multifamily and it's just not the proper place for it, the city has the latitude through the SUP review process to say no. If it's adjoining interim holding, for example, or a hayfield, then city council has the latitude to embrace the SUP or put time constraints on it as they see fit in order to provide a little more protection. So that's what's coming forward to you. It's basically the sole change of Article 4 to allow for that specific use permit. And you see an underscore there with an S as a consideration to allow for truck parking in the instances that I've been aware of to support as a secondary or ancillary use to support another use possibly for a business. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public to talk on this issue? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any more discussion on this item? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the zoning ordinance change as presented by the city staff.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, are there any more discussion on this item? Not? Councilman Perkel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That is approved. Our next item is to consider adopting resolution, and I see she walked in. Consider adopting the resolution 15-20 approving a change in the rates of Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Texas Division as a result of a settlement between Atmos and the Atmos Texas municipalities under the rate review mechanism. I'm going to call upon Ms. Shelley Burnett.
Yes.
As in the Texas town of Burnett, huh?
Actually, from San Angelo.
Okay.
I am Shelley Burnett. I'm manager of public affairs for Atmos Energy. And I'm happy to be here with you guys tonight. I'm sorry, I just got here at the right time, didn't I?
Right on time, yeah.
So anyway, I was at Stevieville earlier tonight. So you guys have joined the Atmos Texas Municipalities Group, and they negotiate on your behalf, along with about 59 other cities, for these rates, the settlement that you have before you today. So basically, the increase is about 97 cents a month or less than $12 a year on a residential customer. For a commercial customer, the increase is about $36 a year on the average. And so basically, that's where we are, and that's what your consultant has negotiated for you guys. Actually, what we filed for was about 29 million, and they negotiated down to about 21.9. And so that's where we are. And you guys have the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have concerning the agreement.
Counselors, any questions for Shelley? I'd like to call upon our city manager here to kind of give us a little thought on this. You've dealt with this before.
You bet. For the benefit of the public, matter of fact, this agreement also kind of covers last year, too, a little bit. The state regulators, Railroad Commission regulates the pricing of natural gas, and we can contest the case. And we join with a whole bunch of other cities as a group and hire a legal team that represents us before the Railroad Commission. And so it's a dogfight at the Railroad Commission, so to speak. And our attorneys fought well, and they ruled in favor of not so favorable for us last year. And so it put us kind of at a disadvantage as we're wrapping up last year's negotiations into this year. And as she said, that they were asking for a $29 million increase among the 59 cities for the infrastructure that they've installed and have to replace. Growing areas tend to have more infrastructure needs than shrinking areas. So we're fortunate to live in a region that is growing, and so those numbers come in, around 29 million is what they're asking for. Our consultant and the group weighed in on the fact how favorable the ruling was from the Railroad Commission towards Atmos last year. And so they opted to agree to this settlement this year. And so the resolution was approved by most of the cities. We're one of the few remaining cities left because our meeting date didn't allow for a timely signature or execution of the resolution. So it's really important that we move forward with this agreement or we will stand one of the lone wolves of the organization of our coalition of cities that have agreed to adopt this. And if we're a lone wolf, then we'll bear the cost of the legal fees representing our citizens from here on out in this process, which could be rather extensive. So staff also has reviewed and talked with the attorney, the representatives, and we're in agreement with our coalition of cities and need to approve this.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
Shelley, the $12 is per year, right?
Yes, sir. Based on an average customer, and that's at an average of 4.6, I'm sorry, 460 CCF per year. It used to be 46 NCF in our calculations. It's just one decimal point difference. But yes, it's on the average $12 a year per residential.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for Ms. Burnett or Chris Coffin? Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you, guys.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution 15-20.
So move, Mayor.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I got a second by Councilperson Myers. Any more discussion, counsel? If not, Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
That resolution is adopted. Our next item is to consider all matters incident and related to the insurance and the sale of the City of Granbury, Texas combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation Series 2015A, including the adoption of an ordinance 15-25 authorizing the assurance of such certificates of obligation. I think we're going to have Mr. John Martin, or, okay, Avery's going to speak first. I never know which one of you guys are going to go first.
I was trying to confuse you. Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager. We are here tonight. I wanted to give you a little background on the funding from the Texas Water Development Board. Back in November, we applied for some funding in the amount of $16.4 million. The city was approved since then and went through all the necessary application process. At this time, we are here to give you an update, and our financial advisor, John Martin from Southwest Securities, will give you an update on the sale or the issuance of this bond in the amount of $16.4 million. And I'll just turn the floor over to him.
What was the interest rate?
John wanted me to go ahead and tell you the interest rate. That is under 2%. And that was secured last Thursday. So we weren't able to send it out in your packet, but it was secured last Thursday and under 2%.
Under?
Yes. Great.
1.97% is the interest rates. So what we handed out there, the interest rates shown there in the middle column there of the handout, average out to 1.97. The, it's funny because the first pass that they, when we got the first email from them in terms of what the rates were, they were, these rates were going out to in the 270s out in the later term. And so that didn't quite look right from what we've been talking about. And I'm really going to have some trouble with particularly Mr. Allen when I come to the council. And, because he's going to remember that we talked about, you know, we'd probably be in the low 2s and not in the high 2s. So we called back and said, hey, are we sure we're getting credit in Granbury for our AA rating? And I said, And I said, oh, well, they're double A? And it's like, yeah, we put it in the application, you know, and I talked to Keith, and I wanna make sure that, and it was in there clear as day, and, uh, they had overlooked it, so, uh, then they came back, and, uh, so, once again, your strong credit rating pays off, um, and, uh, to the tune, that, this is about, to about, probably better than a half percent after everything's said and done versus, 'cause they just go double A or non-rated. So, um, double A, um, really, um, really helped you guys there, and, um, as you can imagine, on sixteen million bucks, you know, more than half percent, uh, over thirty years adds up to a lot of money. So, um, the, what we're showing you here is, uh, the way your existing debt works. These, excuse me, C O's, uh, will be repaid, uh, out of your enterprise fund. Uh, you all will, uh, budget out of that, and we've worked through a pro forma that , uh, shows on, that shows on the second page, basically showing, uh, ourselves and the Water Development Board, our ability to repay. Um, and you can see the, the existing debt there that we have outstanding, and then the combined totals on the front page of, uh, of our, uh, C O's and G O's that are out, and then all our utility supported debts on the second page, and kinda more in pro forma style showing, you know, our, uh, assuming no, uh, growth, no change in gross revenue or operating expenses, uh, over the next thirty years. So, we just assume zero growth in both to take, take a very conservative approach. Um, the, uh, and so we assume that net revenue figure, uh, all the way through, and you can see that that's sufficient to pay our existing revenue bonds, and then provide us enough surplus to pay the existing C O's that are payable from Water Sewer and also, Water Sewer Electric, excuse me, and, and also the new debt, and those, those are the payments on the new debt. So, uh, what we did was we tried to layer it in, uh, to where there's not a bunch of peaks and valleys in your payments. It's a lot easier for you guys to budget year in and year out, and also leave you flexibility, uh, just in the event at some point in time, you guys might wanna borrow some more money in the next thirty years. So, uh, you'll probably need that flexibility to, uh, be able to dovetail in any new debt that you may be thinking about issuing. Finally, the last page is the, um, proposed schedule of events as, uh, we're, we're targeting, uh, and have hit all our dates thus far. Can't say enough for, uh, staff and, um, Mr. Kendall, uh, and it's been great working with these people, uh, and we've all been really in lockstep, um, through this process, and I think that's why it's gone very smoothly, um, and, uh, keeping in contact with the Water Development Board and holding them accountable to make sure that, uh, they're timely in responses and make certain that they agree that what they receive from us is what's needed, so they don't come back and say we didn't do it right and we're delayed two weeks. So, um, we're down here to, um, the, uh, June second date, uh, which is, uh, you all, you all considering the adoption of this ordinance for the certificates of obligation. Really, this is n-not much different than any other combination tax and revenue C O's that the city has issued in the past. The only difference is it's a privately placed issue with the State of Texas Water Development Board, and they're buying, they are the purchaser, they're the bond holder and owner and investor in these bonds. And, so, they're buying it for, buy and hold, they buy it in the fund, and they're using, uh, federal funds from the old, uh, those, you guys like me that have been around a long time, the old EPA grant dates, days, uh, back in the day when we used to get that for water treatment plants and sewer treatment plants. Uh, they don't do that through those grants, they gave one-time capitalization grant back in the early nineties, and, uh, they gotta make that last, so it's called a state revolving fund, uh, that they borrow it through the S R F program. So, uh, because they're state funds, there's a number of, uh, a lot more tics that we have to go through and hurdles to jump over, um, and that's fine. We've, we've made it through that, uh, feel like pretty good. Uh, so, we're, uh, recommending approval of the ordinance before you tonight. Uh, bond council will then submit the documents that I've got with me, uh, we, we signed, uh, that we're holding in the event that you all do sign off, uh, we'll turn those back over to the, uh, to Norton Rose Fulbright tomorrow morning to, uh, file with the Attorney General and deliver also the executed draft, so we're, uh, gonna be ahead of schedule and all that. We've already started the private placement memorandum, almost complete there. We're just waiting on, um, uh, the final details, uh, that we'll, uh, have tonight, and, uh, then we plan to deliver money June twenty-sixth. So, um, we're, we're all on schedule, we're on target, and actually a little ahead of where we thought we'd be when we first started this process, by a couple of months, when you say, Keith?
Yep.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Counsel, is there any questions for, uh, John Martin?
Clear.
Councilman Couch?
John, um, so this would fund the end of June?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, um, this might be a question for Keith. Um, Keith, can you give us a sense of, uh, the amount of the bond that you would draw down, basically, uh, for construction, when that would start?
The, we're hoping, like John mentioned, we're a couple of weeks, uh, ahead of, a couple of months ahead of schedule. We're hoping that we'll be taking bids in August, awarding in September, then construction is starting. Uh, it's gonna take, it's eighteen months, but we would draw down all of the sixteen million, four hundred and forty-three thousand within those eighteen months. All of that-
I'm just curious of, when do you see a substantial draw of the bond?
It's, the, the substantial draw that will actually occur that fall, uh, because, well, they'll already be ordering a lot of the equipment that'll be coming in, that all has to be paid upfront, and when you have the R O racks and the membrane racks that they are doing, and the plate sailors that type, for a project of this size, it's not gonna be unusual. It'll start seeing the first few months of a two and a half man draw, a two man draw, and, and a man and a half draw, and then you'll start seeing a million a month after that.
Is it early as September?
That's correct.
Okay.
September, October, it, it depends on when we sign the contracts and award it and they issue the first, 'cause when they hit us with the mobilization, uh, pay, monthly pay estimate, they're gonna hit us with all the equipment, uh, payments at that time too. So, September, October, depending on how that falls with the payment of the monthly pay estimate.
Okay. And are you comfortable?
Yes.
That this bond will cover?
Yes, we are comfortable with that.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor, I got a question for both of them.
Councilman Allen?
First, John, thank you for getting the interest rate down. Now, Keith, you go ahead and work on it and get our price down?
Yes, sir, we're planning on doing that. It does have a healthy, uh, contingency in it, but, you know, you can always utilize that, but because we're on an existing site, because we're doing a lot of trying to keep the plant operating and be tearing down a lot of existing stuff, there's a lot of good reason for that contingency to have that, 'cause there're gonna be some things we run into, some pipes, uh, conditions and other things that you just can't go in and investigate at this point. One, there's never enough money for geotechnical. Secondly, a lot of that's already in operation, we can't get to it. Uh, then, as, so as we start working around that, getting into it, I'm sure we're gonna find some things that we didn't anticipate. There's, there's never once been a perfect set of plans yet, but we feel very comfortable with both the construction costs to us and the contingency funds available with this bond issuance.
I know we all thank you for what you're doing for the big hole out there. Give us money and appreciate that very much.
Very, very welcome. It's our, it's our pleasure, thank you.
May I add one more thing, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Martin?
The, uh, and, and Mr. Couch's question kinda, uh, reminded me that I needed to point this out, that's a little different, uh, with, when you have a, uh, when you're borrowing from the Water Development Board, is that we don't, with, when we have, when we issue our own C O's and we do them as a publicly offered deal, or even a private placement, uh, at the closing date, those funds are delivered, uh, to, to the city, and you all put them in your deposit, through your depository, you might invest them in, you know, short-term investments or, or whatever it may be under the Texas Public Funds Act. When we do the Water Development Board, the city does not take possession of those funds. They are held, uh, they'll be held by an escrow agent, and there's only a, a few of those types of banks that can be used. We took bids for that, and Bank of Texas is gonna be, uh, serving as escrow agent. So, the funds are deposited there, and then the only way that you can get to those monies is you have to do a requisition, uh, that Ava and, and Keith have, have worked through. So, it's, uh, again, we talked about the additional little steps that you have to go through, and so they have to sign off when, to, you know, make sure that the engineering, that that's all part of what was laid out in the plan and so forth. So, um, it's kind of, it's, it's good, and there's a checks and balances, but, you know, sometimes if you need to pay a contractor quick, it makes it, it, it can be a little bit of a pain.
Do we pay, we only pay interest on the money we get, we don't pay the interest on the-
That's the way it used to work. Now that's, you know, now, now they've basically said, well, we'll ratchet down the interest rates for you, but you gotta pay from delivery. So, the interest is gonna start, you're gonna start accruing from June twenty-sixth, sir.
John, will we see any return on the escrow?
No. No. It's, it, technically, it's Water Development Board funds, they're, they're, they're holding them, and they've got, they've got right to them until the city's requisitioned. Did I say that right, Keith?
That's correct. That's the arbitrage.
Yeah, yeah, and you don't have any arbitrage rebate issues either.
Counsel, any more questions for, uh, John or Keith? Thank you, folks. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance authorizing the assurance and the sale of the Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series Twenty Fifteen A.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch?
Second.
I have a second, but Councilman Allen? Counselors, any more discussion on this item? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
The resolution is, is adopted. Our next item is to consider adopting a joint resolution fifteen dash twenty-one establishing an inter-jurisdictional emergency management program between the City of Granbury and Hood County. You wanna talk on that first? Okay, we're gonna ask Ray Wilson to talk about that a little bit for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, my name's Ray Wilson, I'm the Hood County Fire Marshal Emergency Management Coordinator. I'd like to thank you for your time, uh, hearing me tonight. Uh, quick bottom line, uh, I'm asking the council to consider a joint resolution between the city and the county to work together in an emergency management program. Uh, this has been an ongoing, uh, event. Uh, the city council in nineteen ninety did pass an emergency man-management program, uh, ordinance. The county has had one too. Uh, right now, I am renewing all of our emergency plans that cover the county and the cities. Uh, that's done every five years. I've noticed that this hasn't been visited in quite a while. The most recent, uh, joint resolution I can find is from two thousand and three. I think twelve years is a long time to go without having revisited and looked at this information. So, therefore, uh, I went to the county commissioners and Tuesday of last week at their open court, they, uh, renewed a new county, uh, court order establishing emergency management program. Uh, I believe a copy of that is in your packet. Uh, it's pretty much the same as what your ordinance from nineteen ninety is. So, what I'm doing now, since I am renewing, uh, all, all of our plans, is asking the, uh, council to, uh, consider a joint resolution with the county to work together during an emergency, uh, upon approval, uh, tonight, then I will take the joint resolution back to the commissioner's court for their consideration and signature also. And I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Counselors, are there any questions for, uh, Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Ray. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the joint resolution fifteen dash twenty five twenty-one establishing an inter-jurisdictional emergency management program between the City of Granbury and Hood County.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Park, Perkel. Counsel, is there any more discussion on this item? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen? Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Sorry.
Worried you were gonna listen.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't miss you, bud. That is approved, that resolution is approved, thank you. The next item is to consider approving a consulting agreement between the Public Management Corporation and the City of Granbury. I think we've got, uh, Jake Adams out there, do you wanna kick that off?
Jake McAdams.
There he is, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am Jake McAdams with Public Management, it's good to see you again. Uh, well, before you tonight is a grand administration, uh, proposal with Public Management for a possible, uh, Texas Department of Agriculture C W G disaster grant. Uh, well, I was talking to Mr. Kaufman, I believe it was this Monday, or this morning, and he has had several meets the last few days, trying to wrap up some stuff, get some more information before we do proceed and put in an application for this T D A disaster grant. Um, he also indicated that there's a, a possibility that, uh, there might be funds available through, uh, TexDOT, FEMA, some other funding sources, that the city might not need a, a T D A disaster grant. If that is the case, uh, what, what I was talking to Mr. Kaufman about is that Public Management won't invoice the city if, if we don't submit as well as receive a grant through T D A disaster funds. But, uh, we wanted to go ahead and leave it on the agenda tonight, that way if the city did pursue a T D A disaster fund, that we wouldn't have to come back again and, and execute a contract. So, a-at this time, uh, if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yep. Uh, Chris, we got something to hit with that to this?
You bet. I just wanted to give you all some more information. Um, you know, Jake is, uh, talked to us at our last meeting, but what I'm trying to do is, is, uh, set the table to where if FEMA funding doesn't come through, or TexDOT doesn't come through, we'll still have, um, resources to help pay for that, uh, that water and sewer loss, and, uh, above whatever the insurance may or may not pay. So, uh, we're still waiting on, on all those things to finalize. It's very important for me to repeat what he said, that they won't invoice us unless we receive grant funding, and then that, uh, invoice would be paid for by the state. So, it's really a, uh, opportunity to move forward, and if, between now and the next meeting, which will be later this month, if we need to move forward with an application, we've done the administration to, to move forward to do that. So, uh, staff's been working really hard with, uh, FEMA and TexDOT and with, uh, this grant consulting firm to seek funding from Texas Department of Agriculture. Those are the three main areas that we might be able to get reimbursement, so I just wanted to set it up for us and move forward from there.
But if, if we get the money due to the way y'all are working on it, then we won't need their services, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
But this is kind of a backup.
That is correct.
Okay.
And it's, that's what it's designed for, is a backup. It, they don't, they don't roll these out very often, and they're hard to, uh, acquire and qualify for, and staff has done a online training, and we're ready to roll forward, and we've done everything administratively in-house to, to set us up for this if we need to pursue it.
Chris, by the way, does Public Management now, would, would they enter into, uh, assisting us in doing some of the application going forward, or would we do all those on our own?
They would, they would write the application, uh, completely for us, and they would also do an environmental study, uh, to get this where we're ready to roll.
Okay.
And, uh, he's, he's assured me that we're not gonna get invoiced unless we're recipient of funds from Texas Department of Agriculture. That's how they typically operate, is admin on a disaster is paid for by the state.
Very good. Counsel, any questions for, uh, Jake, Allen, or, uh, Mr. Kaufman here?
Yeah, I got one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
Hey, let's say we go, we go your route.
Mm-hmm.
How long does it take us before we receive the money?
Uh, typically, it takes about two to three weeks to review, another week or two to award, uh, and then we can start getting money. So, from the date of application, uh, I think they're saying about two months, uh, to actually start utilizing the funds.
So, if we've been paid, or, let's say we went ahead and paid for the grinder pump and stuff, and they approved it after the fact, I mean, we'd, we'd get our money, right?
Well, um, T D A is trying to decide exactly how they're gonna handle that. Uh, we have already talked to several people up at T D A, specifically their environmental, uh, specialist, and they said that once we get the environmental review, and that is approved, then what the environmental reviewer said is that everything after that date, if we go the T D A route, should be eligible for reimbursement.
We, we've got that, oh, hadn't, hadn't we got to review or not?
No, we haven't.
We haven't?
'Cause-
He's still, he hasn't done the environmental study.
Yeah. So, we, we're working on that, and as soon as we get that signed and sent in, uh, then everything from the date that's approved, which they have fifteen days to approve it, and everything from that date forward should be qualified for reimbursement.
When do you think you'd have that done?
Um, I mean, w-we can get the document signed, uh, tomorrow, and then submit those tomorrow, wait fifteen days, and so we're looking, what, about June twentieth or eighteenth? Something like that? Yes, sir.
Okay, but-
But, but the- But, but then, again, to get those funds, all right, so if we get our environmental approved on June eighteen, we still wouldn't be able to get reimbursement from TDA at that time because we hadn't put in an application yet. And so then, we would have that on file with TDA, but then it would be the city's decision, all right, so FEMA, Texas dot, these other sources aren't gonna come through, we wanna go ahead and put in an application with TDA. Once they approve that, then we can show them all of our receipts to that date.
So we've got, we've got it on order, but we don't wanna pay for it, right?
We're, well, we're gonna have to pay for it at some point in time, but we need to move forward.
With this deal here?
Okay. And they're willing to work with us on that environmental, so it's, it's very nice, thank you.
That's okay. Counsel, any more questions for Mr. McAllen or Chris? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consulting agreement between the Public Management Corporation and the City of Granbury.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second, Councilperson Parsons. Counsel, is there any more discussion on this item? If not, Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That is approved. Thank you. Our next item is to consider an appointment to the Tourism Advisory Board to fill the seat vacated by the one representative from the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, on the Tourism Advisory Board, we had a lady that left the chamber that was filling that position, and so now we've got an applicant, or got a person that's filling that role, so they're gonna put her in that position. And Steve, you wanna talk on that a little bit for us, please?
Yes, sir, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. You may recall that last June, appointments to the Tourism Advisory Board were, were made, and four members were appointed to serve three-year terms in order to stagger the board terms, and all terms thereafter will be two-year terms. At that time, Sandra Walton was appointed to represent the Chamber of Commerce for a term of three years. Sandra, excuse me, Sandra is no longer with the chamber, thus vacating that seat with two years remaining. City staff received notice from Mike Scott, the Chamber of Commerce CEO, that the chamber would like Morgan Lindsay, the Membership and Events Coordinator, to fulfill the remainder of that term as the Chamber of Commerce representative. I believe you all received Ms. Morgan's application packet separately. City staff does recommend appointment of a new candidate to fill the vacated Chamber of Commerce seat on the Tourism Advisory Board with the term ending May thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen.
Ray, Steve, Counsel, is there any questions for Steve or concerns?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
Steve, um, can you comment on Mr. Baker's remarks earlier tonight, and, I mean, what's your take on that?
Well, I certainly think that he had some valid points. There probably is some very suitable candidates out there that, that get overlooked because of the way that the ordinance reads. However, it is specified in the city ordinance that those specific members be appointed based on their affiliation with, with the special interest group, or however you might word it.
Thank you.
Counsel, has everybody had an opportunity to look over the applicant? Any more questions for Mr. Dietrich? If not, I'll entertain a motion to appoint the, to the Tourism Advisory Board the applicant of Lindsay Morgan.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch? I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? If not, Councilman Perkel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman, uh, Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Yep. Lindsay is appointed to the Tourism Advisory Board. At this time, Counsel, is there any more discussion or concerns? If not, we will adjourn the council meeting.